So seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. We have quorum. We're meeting here at Mashpee Town Hall, Wacoia Meeting Room 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. We're being broadcast live on Channels 8 and 1072. The meeting will be recorded and later rebroadcast. We're also streamlined on Mashpee website, our town of Mashpee website, www.mashpma.gov backslash channel hyphen 8. There is a Zoom link on our agenda that you can access the meeting through. The meeting ID is 984-7015-1548. That's 984-7015-1548. The passcode is 508-834. The passcode is 508-834. Okay. So just, just a little note before we go to the next thing. Has Zoom started?
They, I believe, are still checking audio. The Zoom is functioning, they're just checking to make sure the audio will work for both you two and the participant.
Okay. All right. With that, I'd invite everybody to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes, minutes from March 19th, 2025, and April 2nd, 2025.
Motion, we approve them as written.
I, I would like to comment about the April 2nd meeting.
Sure.
I hope I didn't say this on page four, one, two, three, fourth paragraph. It says Faulkner noted lot coverage being only 25% in the wetlands. I, I really don't believe I could have said that because that's incorrect statement.
Would you like to clarify?
What I'd like to clarify, well, 25% lot coverage, I think we were talking about pump and asset?
Mm-hmm.
25 lot coverage and we don't count floodplain, which in this case, wetlands are considered floodplain. Do you agree, Mr. Tobin?
I think that sounds correct, Karen. But thank you for calling me, Mr. Tobin.
Thank you.
Very formal. I agree, Ms. Faulkner. I concur.
Thank you.
I make a motion as amended.
Second.
For both, for, for March 19th as presented and April 2nd as amended?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Motion carries. Okay. So what I'd like to do, if we could, is go right to the noisy hole road covenant request for release.
That makes a lot of sense.
So, yeah. So Brian, why don't you start us off and tell us what this is about? And we do have people that have an interest in the property that we, I will recognize after Brian.
Sure. Absolutely. So this is a street number 208 Noisy Hole Road that shows in most of your materials is lot number 54. It is set to close and the settlement agent would just like to adjust for what in their opinion is a Scribner's error that dates back to the 90s. That's the context. Effectively, there was a covenant on this entire subdivision. Some of the roads, Dennis was actually on the board back then, should I notice through going over the meeting minutes, I thought that was very impressive. There was a subdivision, it was called the Park Place subdivision, and involved a lot of streets, including Noisy Hole Road, another one called Burning Bush, et cetera. So what happened is this board voted initially to release the covenant for a number of the lots on Noisy Hole Road and then a number of lots on a number of different streets. The release for the lots on the different streets got recorded first and then when, by the time that the release for Noisy Hole Road, which was voted on first, got recorded, instead of referencing the original covenant restriction that it was releasing, it actually referenced the first release. So that, we were basically voting to correct that Scribner's error now. The reason why we know that you're voting for that is the following. If you look in your packet materials, one, you'll see that on 31986, this board already voted to release the covenant on Noisy Hole Road. On 72486, the, that release was recorded for Noisy Hole Road lots, including Lot 54, which is this, again, street address number 208. On 101086, a building permit was issued for this property. On 42787, a certificate of occupancy was issued on this property. Noisy Hole Road in this particular section is presently a town-owned road, so there shouldn't be any concerns about the installation of the way. You have also in your packet a town water tie-in card showing that it is receiving town water. I didn't go so far as to get tie-in cards from Eversource for gas and electric, but the applicant by and through their council has confirmed with me that the house is indeed tied into gas and electric. So there really is no foreseeable reason to not vote in, as an approval, to do an additional release for this particular lot, which will serve like a covenant analogy to a confirmatory deed. So for those of you in the real estate world, know you have a confirmatory deed whenever you just correct a minor Scribner's error that could potentially have implications for title. Now, all of that being said, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them or I'll turn it over to applicants' counsel.
Do you have anything else to add?
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Hi, my name's Lisa Micah Kelly. I'm an attorney from Kettuitt and I represent Andrea Duser, who is actually the former owner of 208 Noisy Hole Road. We actually closed on the property last Friday, subject to a holdback pending issuance of this release of this covenant. And as Mr. Tobin indicated, it's really nothing more than unfortunately, the covenant release, which intended to release this Lot 54 back in 1986, rather than the reference going to the original covenant, which was recorded in 1985. It references just a prior release. So it's really nothing more than a Scribner's error. And so that's why we're here before you this evening.
Okay. So is it enough to accept a motion to approve the release of covenant agreement Form E as presented?
Yeah, as drafted by counsel.
Second.
Okay. I was just asking if everything was included in what he said.
Yes. So did you make that motion, sir?
You do, yeah.
Okay. And Dennis, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now, what do we sign?
Yeah, for their convenience, perhaps we could just go.
Around the table.
Yeah. Would you like to run it to the chair?
Do we need anything notarized?
She's a notary.
I am a notary.
Okay. So we're signing this voluntarily for the stated purposes. Go ahead, go right ahead.
Rather than ask you all for your license this evening, I just ask you all to attest to me that you are, in fact, you say you are.
Yes.
You're all over the age of 18.
Yes.
Then you'll be signing this covenant voluntarily this evening.
Yes.
This covenant release, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And so, do you want me to sign here?
So you're just going to sign down the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So sign and pass along. I was a notary once, so I, sometimes people forget to ask that, sorry. You didn't. I noticed, Colton, that you walked in, there's, there's agendas up at the table. And so if there's anything you want to, you know, speak on as we go through the agenda, just let me know, okay? So, guys, go this way.
My gun.
I know. Do you want to notarize it first?
Yes.
Oh.
Sorry. Don't touch that. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, I see who's here. Okay. I turned it on for you.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next matter is presentation of the Mashpee Rotary retrofit plans. So, Colton, I don't know if you saw in our packet last week, there was a letter from the Department of Transportation, the Massachusetts DOT, and it had drawn on it, in just a very primitive way, they weren't engineered or not, shared paths going almost completely around the rotary and out of the rotary on two legs, and I think sidewalks going out on three legs. So our concern was that the shared paths, like, went over the islands, you know, those triangular islands on either side of the legs going in and out? And so we asked for some time with the DOT to explain that. Now, that, it didn't happen, we weren't able to secure somebody from the DOT, but Cape Cod Commission was available to talk to us about, remember the Rotary study that they did about five years ago? So just to kind of, before we put in some comments to the state, I was, we're so happy that the Cape Cod Commission can help us remember what happened with that Rotary study. So, so are we ready to go with that piece?
I believe we are, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're all set and all hooked up.
Okay. So it's in our packet. Hi.
Good evening. Just want to make sure my audio is working.
Sure. This is, just for the record, Madam Chair, this is Colleen Maderos from the Cape Cod Commission.
Hi, Colleen. Can you hear us?
She's participating via Zoom.
Yep.
And she has slides that are patching through on a direct link.
Is this just audio?
No, there are slides, if you look at the big screen TV's.
I'll move.
Oh, because we don't have the, the laptop, we can't project, okay. All right, well, go right ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name's Colleen Maderos. I'm the Transportation Program Manager at the Cape Cod Commission, and thanks for having me here tonight. I do a little refresher on a corridor study we did several years back, and happy to answer some questions. Just give me a minute. So, little bit of background in history, back in 2019, this corridor planning study was conducted as part of our Unified Planning Work Program. So that as commission transportation staff, we usually take on a corridor study each year or so, and this one was identified, it was identified as, previously we were looking at rotaries in the region and found that they were high crash locations, they are high volume, regional intersections. So we wanted to dig a little further, and we also worked closely with the town of Mashpee staff at that time, as well as Mass. DOT. The Rotary Route 28 and the Rotary intersection itself is under Mass. DOT ownership and jurisdiction as well, so they were, we worked closely with them throughout the project. And then, from a timelines perspective, the report and project wrapped up right as COVID started happening, so March 2020. And these were the project goals at the time, so Rotary was identified as a high crash location, so improving safety was number one. Also knowing that it is a regional intersection and looking at the opportunities to reduce some congestion, because sometimes congestion can lead to some safety issues, people taking small, smaller gaps in traffic and whatnot, so noting some pinch points for congestion. And then another big one was accommodating all users. So this intersection currently does not have any accommodations for pedestrians and bicyclists, and we do notice, note it, it is a barrier in the regional network. So if you think about it, Barnstable can't really reach the rest of, you know, this intersection. They have to go up 28 from Quinnequiddo or themselves, they can't sneak around because there's water there. So really, the Route 28 is kind of this pinch point where someone has to go on some, the Rotary or the Route 28 itself, then they can get on some more local roads that are a little bit less, more desirable, slower speed and whatnot, so that was, and also knowing that, right, you know, Mass. DOT's policy is complete streets, so really also looking at opportunities to provide opportunities for all users. And we did note observations of non-motors and bicyclists using the Rotary. Notably, they're using those, a few commercial properties that surround the Rotary as, using that as a sidewalk, you could say, but no formal accommodations. This was our study at the time, so it was, the Rotary was the main focus, but we know, noted the next major intersections. So this was a large study, actually, so we went up to where those limits are, you see on this slide. So if you dig into the report, there are other recommendations for some of those roadway links and other study area intersections as well. And also, this is notes where we did pull through existing conditions data, so included crash data for all these lines in blue and traffic volumes were also collected for all of these links and intersections. So as I mentioned, crashes were kind of the initial reason for looking at the Rotary. And so at the time, we were looking at 2012 to 2016, that was the latest that was closed data from the DMV that we were able to obtain. So there were 120 total crashes, and 25 of those were injuries, so someone needed to seek medical attention. And you'll see here in the pie chart, the rear end. So the Rotary, it, we did, it's kind of those over the shoulder probably crashes, someone, thinking someone in front of them is going and then they didn't. They might be more of a fender bender, because we didn't see all of them resulting in a major injury as well. But the Rotary and roundabouts, you know, you use those two circular intersection terms, they really do try to slow people down, they're all right turns, so that's where you see why rear ends are such a problem, crash type, because you can't really turn left as you would with a traffic signal or an intersection like that. Okay. And then noting that this, again, is a repeating top crash location on Cape Cod, so we wanted to study it. And we did take it a step further, so we performed a roadway safety audit, so this is more of a detailed engineering, one day audit, where we prepare collision diagrams and review every crash report, of really understanding why it happened or what, what were the conditions, was it daylight, was it nighttime, was the road wet, and didn't involve pedestrian. And then also included this field visit, where DOT came down, and we had other representatives from the town involved, and took a real observation look of seeing, are these signs in the right space, in the right place, the condition, missing pavement markings, things like that. And I believe at the time, you know, since that, there's been some small signage replacements, so that has identified, the Rotary Safety Audit did identify short-term, quick-fix items, and then also identified some long-term ideas to really look at improving safety. And that has its own report on our website as well as a document. And here's just a quick summary of, like I said, those short-term into long-term. So you'll see those state log driver signs did get replaced, they were old and falling apart, so now they were replaced. And then we put in some other short-term things, and then you'll see in the longer term, really looking at what, what is the long-term solution for the Rotary. And that's where we came in, because we wanted to kind of public outreach. And that's where I'll pivot to now, so we did, had great public outreach as part of this project, and I'll summarize that. It started in April 2019, we had some listening sessions, we brought some maps, so people can tell us what they like, what they don't like, and bring any ideas. So you'll see, that's a little bit of summary here, we had a good attendance at some meetings, and then also received email comments as well. Quick summary here of what people like. The one that stands out to me was people like the Rotary because of the holiday lights. It's a sense of pride for the, the community to have that display every year. They like, you know, works well for the most of the year. Cars are always moving, so you don't feel like you're sitting in a lot of congestion traffic as well. There's open space as well. And then, then noted, people noted the issues, so challenging for pedestrians and bikes. The Rotary is kind of large, is it one lane, is it two lanes, so you know, how are we supposed to use it? It is a little bit of a higher speed, because it's a very large circular intersection, whereas sometime now you'll see a smaller roundabout. There's one, you know, not nearby, nearby, I mean, in Sandwich, you know, Kettuitt Road area, so that's more of a smaller roundabout. And then there's some problematic issues with the Rotary. There's, you know, we do have actual driveways to commercial businesses, which is not a typical situation as well, and so, and then people may not know how to drive in Rotaries, because we have our summer population and tourists that arrive. So then we, we did work through identifying, so some potential concepts to get public feedback on, and we came back in December of that same year, 2019, with another round of public meetings to get feedback on a range of potential and long-term improvement projects. So that was really well attended, as well, and, you know, these 70 people attend, and then also receiving numerous email comments as well. And the range of alternatives included keeping the Rotary in some fashion, trying to improve safety, so it's called a Rotary retrofit. We also looked at making it more traditional, roundabout, be smaller circular intersection. And then we did look at, you know, maybe an bridge tunnel that came up, and then converting it to a traffic signal as well, so we wanted to kind of get feedback on what people might want to see. And when I talk about a Rotary retrofit, at the time, it was a pretty newer concept, but I think some people are a little bit more familiar with it now. This is an example of Middleboro, Massachusetts, but noting that the Bourne Bridge Rotary is now a Rotary retrofit, you could call it. So signage and striping within the circle has been added in lane designation, so that's the premise of, of the Rotary retrofit. So keeping, keeping the existing infrastructure, but kind of making it a little safer with signs and lines. And this is the after example that Mass. DOT did in Middleboro. So you see, they kind of tried to, they keep the existing pavement, but they use pavement markings to designate, okay, this is a one-lane section, you should be in this lane if you need to exit, or if you want to circle again to a different exit, you need to be in this lane. And it's had resounding success. Congestion has been greatly reduced for this example, as well as safety has improved. So this was one of our first conceptual alternatives we presented. And then this is the actual graphic of it that we prepared as staff. So you'll see, it's keeping the existing Mashpee Rotary and adding some lane designation and striping. So there is maybe a little one area that is a one-lane section. We thought that there might be an opportunity, you could fit two lanes circulating, and that could help in that summer peak period where the traffic is queuing a little bit longer. And then you'll see here in the orange color, that is that multimodal combinations that we were recommending at the time. So we were also thinking that that would be a multi-use path, because Route 151 has this great path facility, and that could tie into that as well. And Mass. DOT also was recommending a path system for the Route 28 corridor, because that's the big desire line for 28 and 151. So that's where we also wanted to lay out that there would be multimodal accommodations. You'll see here, this is all very conceptual, but noting that we would provide crosswalks on each approach, so people could circulate, and they wanted to, not just, they wanted to maybe get diagonally across, so that's how you do it, you crosswalks. I did put in just a quick recent, there's a Route 28 roundabout project in Chatham, and they also similarly had a shared use path, a multi-use path adjacent to the circular intersection. So here's a recent construct, finished construction photo, of what path next to this circular intersection looks like, and you'll see there is splitter islands where the crosswalk does go through, giving people a resting spot, so they can do it, it's called a two-stage crossing, so they don't have to find a gap in both directions at the same time, they can cross one and then wait for another lane to yield. I can also bring up another example if there's questions on this. And everyone's familiar with the Bourne Bridge on the other side, the north side of the canal, it's called Belmont Circle. It's where the old Grandma's Pie tut boat, and there's a CVS and Starbucks. It's not really a Rotary, but it's called a circle, and Mass. DOT did recently update that circular intersection to put up shared use path around the entire intersection, and they did put these overhead traffic lights as well for people in the crosswalks. So I could bring up another photo if that's something, but just want to reference that. And then I'm going to quickly just show the other alternatives that we prepared, that we sought feedback on. This is, again, it's called a roundabout, so making the circle smaller, so you're going to lose that center large circular space, but you gain some land on the outskirts. But again, the holiday lights were something that was strongly advocated for, so this, but this would improve safety, it would actually slower the, slow the speeds down as well, but keep that circular intersection. And then we did look at, you know, some overpass or tunneling. They, we didn't go too far into that, because knowing that this would have major property impacts, there would be very high structures that need to be graded back into the existing land, and we're not, didn't really feel like it set fit within the community character as well, we got that feedback as well. And plus, very expensive, so paying for your buck wasn't, didn't really seem to make sense that this is where the dollars might need to be spent. And then we did look at traffic signals. There was a range of three options, I'm just showing one right now, but you could make it more of a traditional intersection with a traffic lane. We were recommending making it maybe a four-leg, it's less complicated, so there are options to reroute one of the legs, and this one, we did put Great Neck Road south, teeing it up into intersection Route 28 on the southern portion. So again, this is a photo from that Alternatives meeting we had. You'll see the top here is the Rotary retrofit project, and all, you can see right here, best, best idea, like it, great idea, second best would be a roundabout. So we really heard that strong support for any future long-term project should keep the Rotary and just try to improve, prove what it is right now. And there was also strong support for putting in multimodal accommodations for non-motors, and again, not really supportive of some major intersection reconfiguration. And here, I'm just putting kind of like the benefits versus the detriments of this Rotary retrofit that we showed. Again, it improves safety by incorporating some more line, lines and safe striding and striping. We've seen this in other areas of this Commonwealth, we think it would improve congestion, because you could reallocate, maybe putting two lanes in areas, obviously provides new accommodations for. Obviously, it provides new accommodations for non-motorists, no property, minor property impacts. There is, you'll see that light yellow align, that's what we think is the right-of-way available. Again, we think it's a strong, fits strongly within the community character. And that's my presentation, so I was just going to kind of give you that quick recap of what we did at the time. The report is still on our website at capegodcommission.org/mashpee rotary. And I know you have since received correspondence from the state from MassDOT. They have, and once we wrapped up that study, in the interim, they have initiated, it seems like a long-term project based on some of this feedback for a rotary retrofit project based on our recommendations and public feedback. So it seems like they're coming to you for more feedback, and it seems pretty still early on in the process, so I'm glad they're looping you all in. So I'll turn over to Rini.
Yeah, Colleen, can you go back to the retrofit figure?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So have you seen the DOT sketch on this yet?
Yeah, I saw it in your meeting packet.
Okay. So my, what I noticed was that you see on this screen how the orange is the shared path, right?
Yes.
It's kind of on the outside of the rotary, right? In the DOT sketch, it goes through those green triangle islands. It's inside the rotary. Did you notice that, Colleen?
I'm just bringing it up right now, but that is typical of what DOT is proposing. And I'll try to bring up that Belmont Circle in Bourne, that recent project as well. And that's, that would show you, that's the latest design standards and recommendations. So at the time, we weren't engineering this. We weren't sure, you know, where to put the splitter islands again. So we just put them there noting that they need to land somewhere. So that still needs to be engineered out, and we didn't have that detail at this time, at that time.
So we'll wait for you to get that. Dennis, did you want to say something right now?
On this retrofit, going down 28 towards Hyannis, it looks like they got a two-lane highway there once you get past the rotary. But it's a one-lane, and when you go further down, it's going to back all that traffic up if you let people think there's two lanes going down there.
Yep, yep, so that's an option we showed that you could.
You can't even do it. It's not wide enough. And then when you go further down, like towards Archit Road, there's a light there and you'd be backing the traffic up. People would say, get out of my way, oh, what are you doing?
Yep, this is not final in any way. This was just showing what could happen. And I think, yeah, there's definitely time to provide feedback that maybe we don't need to add two lanes.
And I'm a definite no for a roundabout. That's not right for right there. Definitely no.
Yeah, I don't think that DOT is, they're not, they're not suggesting that.
One more question. So this is a two-party project because there's a 151 owned by the town and 28 is owned by the state. So you have to get them together before we can even, and the state already spent a lot of money, I mean, the town, on 151, and they're still working on it. So this project could be 15, 20 years away.
So Colleen, did you, were you able to find the example in Bourne?
Yeah, I'm just.
Because she's saying the design standards have changed since this happened. That DOT.
Well, yeah, we're not DOT like engineers, so we did our best to show. Can you see the new photo?
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah.
It still makes sense to cut those islands down and make the rotary a little lighter.
Yeah.
So those traffic lights I was talking about, they're called pedestrian hybrid beacons.
Okay.
There's another one. This is on the scenic highway approach. So it may not be a full, the full width of the triangle throughout. It might be more of a smaller median. As you see here, this isn't a big part of where the traffic, the traffic is off the page of where the stop line is. So this is a little bit further back from the queue of where you would stop. That's pretty typical. They're not going to put you right at the stop bar, but they're going to put you back so that they can see people oncoming and then a little bit better.
So is there traffic lights for the bike, the bicycle?
Yes.
And press a button and you can get across? All right.
Yeah, yeah, they are, those are pedestrian hybrid beacons, and they usually just, just sit black.
Yeah.
They're not turned on until someone pushes the pedestrian button, and then they start to flash to say there's a pedestrian walking. So they're not traditional traffic light.
So that's a question to DOT, are they going to have traffic lights?
Yeah, it could be. They're not there yet, from what I'm seeing in this example. It could be likely.
If they don't put traffic light, that's an accident going to happen every day in the summer.
Can you, can you go back to the example retrofit of the Mashpee Rotary? Because I want to, Colton, I don't know, did you see the example in our last packet?
I think I have seen it.
So I just want to show you what. Our big concern was safety in that, see how, and I'm sorry, Colleen, you probably won't be able to see me, but this shared path is outside of the rotary, right?
Yes, this picture is not representative.
Right, and the DOT is putting that shared path across these islands, these splitter islands. And we were very concerned that would be safe. So I know you bicycle. Do you want to come up to the mic and just share your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so obviously I'm not a traffic engineer, but it does sound like this is the new practice that they're using. And I do think that it could be made safely, like especially if they use like those rapid flashing lighting, whether those are overhead, which I know in the picture she showed it was overhead, and that might have been because it was two different lanes. But like a lot of times you'll see them along the side of the road where it's just a sign that's sticking up, and they've got the flashing lights there, kind of letting you know that someone has pushed a button and is trying to cross. Another thing they could do to increase safety would be to like raise the crosswalk to the sidewalk level. That way, when drivers are crossing it, they kind of both have that change in elevation, which kind of acts like a speed hump, which typically speed humps are designed for 20, 25 miles an hour. So it kind of causes them to slow down just naturally, and then also mentally kind of helps them realize that, okay, this isn't necessarily a part of the road. This is a part of the sidewalk that I'm now crossing instead of the pedestrian coming down to the level of the sidewalk. But it also sounds like, from what Colleen is saying, that this is very early stage and that DOT is likely to come back and reach out and get more feedback with designs that they come out with, when they come up with a preliminary design for what they're planning on building, that would then be the appropriate time to come with our concerns of, okay, how can we make this design a little bit safer? But I think that this is a very important project for us to do because this is kind of the center of the town, and it doesn't really have any pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure, especially going out towards the east, over to Quinequissette, where it could then enable people who live on the east side of town to actually get to the center of town on pedestrian infrastructure. Whereas right now, 50 mile an hour road, you got maybe a foot of a shoulder. Not many people are willingly doing that unless they have no other really option. And we should also keep in mind that we did conduct an eastern Mashpee Rotary corridor study, which went further in the direction out to the east. I think that was back in like 2016, which recommended like long-term continuing this shared-use path all the way to the Mashpee Town Line, where I believe there's already some bicycle infrastructure over at the Barnstable portion of Route 28. So I know that that's probably going to cost a good bit more money, so may not be able to be incorporated into this project. But that would be something that we should also continue to push for. I know, Dennis, you mentioned that we've already spent a good bit of money on the 151. It was actually the Cape Cod Commission that spent that money. Mashpee Town didn't, we spent money for the sewer, but we didn't pay for that construction work on Route 151.
They're going to put sidewalks where they're doing, how come the bicyclers can't ride on the sidewalks instead of riding? There's a narrow strip that I see them riding them once in a while on 151. Then thinking when the sidewalks there, can't they share with the pedestrians?
Yes.
It's safer.
Yeah, they are now, where there is a shared-use path, they are able to share that with them. It's just that doesn't exist on all of 151 right now.
But we should make it, you know.
Yeah, and they're working on that along the, from Old Barnstable over to the town line now. This would kind of take it from where it ended at the Mashpee Commons and start moving it east, kind of complete that segment through our town where this is the highest speed roadway we have. And for a long time, there was no infrastructure on any of it.
No, it's good, yep.
All right, so I think we should send a letter to DOT, right? Sharing our concerns, which is we want to maintain one-lane entryway into the system. That we are concerned, you guys let me know if this is correct, we are concerned about the shared path coming into the rotary?
Yeah, definitely, I am.
Are we concerned about the width of the shared-use path is 10 feet? And then they say there's a five-foot buffer. Isn't that really close to the, I mean, certainly better than what we have right now. But it just, it feels dangerous to me. I'd like to know if it is. Well, a shared path like this, that's showing, that Colleen has showing up, I think that would be safer than having it inside.
Yeah, I would say a 10-foot shared-use path with five feet separating it, it's probably going to have some great separation as well.
Great separation.
It feels fairly comfortable.
That's a good point. Yeah, that we're, I think we should tell them that we're extremely concerned about bringing that shared path inside the way they've drawn it. That even though it's their design standards right now, if it's going to necessitate rapid flashing lighting and raised crosswalks, like that's, that's going to cause congestion in the area.
Oh, that could cause accidents.
Whereas if they put the shared path on the outside, like it's shown here, you're going to be okay.
I think, I definitely agree. I think it's better to set it back, just given the character of that rotary and how it's used. I think, though, you could add lights to it if you still maintain the setback. I mean, that's up to them, and I don't know what the current standards are. But maybe, maybe I'm old-fashioned, but to me, it just, common sense would dictate that it's going to be safer to have a little bit more setback because people are anxious to get in and out of the rotary. So when they're on the edge of that, you're just more likely to have somebody getting whacked.
Yeah.
Or are you suggesting they put the shared path?
Well, you see how it's setting back in the Cape Cod Commission's proposal? Like it's set back as opposed to cutting through the islands?
Yeah.
I just like that model better. To me, it just seems like it's going to be more safe.
I can't believe all the comments about the deprecation. That's why we have the acros. That's what they're looking at, the driver.
Yes. And then I think we should say that we really need a lot of community discussion about these crosswalks. That, you ask anybody, are you, are you for a crosswalk? Of course. But I'm very concerned, like, they don't have crosswalks. To us, this is a big highway. This is a big thoroughfare for Mashpee and Barnstable and Falmouth. And it should be treated a little bit more like the Bourne Rotary. You know what I mean? Like, I think the crosswalks, I think they're going to cause congestion and be dangerous.
Looking at this map on the left-hand side, where the shared path is, that's where the CVS is.
Yep.
I mean, I don't think, and that lane goes down.
Yes.
So they're going to have to put a retained wall and fill it all in to put that 10 feet they were at there. I don't know if they can do that.
Well, if you have a shared path, you're going to have to have crosswalks because it's increasing the traffic.
Okay.
You know.
So why don't we just say that we need more community discussion about the crosswalks?
I think so.
Okay.
Go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, I wanted to revisit just for a little bit more clarity, the concept of the one-lane entryway. What I was hearing from Dennis was more of the concern of a two-lane exit, particularly on the Route 28 side. I think a one-lane entryway, and I would defer to potentially Colleen or even DOT, but I would imagine a one, a two-lane entryway into the rotary, coming from 28, coming from Bourne, would actually help diffuse a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
Right, but going the other way, no. You know, two-way like going, what you said, because you could go down Great Neck Road south, or go down 151, or stay on 28. So that's good to have that split there. It eases up the traffic more.
So do I need to revise that comment?
Yeah.
Just don't talk about how many lanes coming in or out?
Oh, no, keep that range, but.
Into 28, but not into the rotary is fine, two lanes into the rotary.
Into the rotary is fine, but going out of the rotary towards Hyannis, it shouldn't be.
And I would even, I would even say into the rotary, coming from.
Hyannis or?
Yeah, coming from Hyannis, because, I mean, I don't, personally, I question the need for two lanes on the other roads.
Anyway, yeah.
They don't seem as high traffic. They don't seem to back up as much. But you all have more experience, you know. I just know that I have noticed that one back up quite a bit.
A couple of times when I went to Patellos, it took me 45 minutes to go from Patellos to the rotary. That's how backed up it was, like it was in the summer.
Yeah.
And it was like, oh, oh, because nobody was getting out of the rotary, you know. People were dashing out, you know, to get by because there's so much traffic going around.
That's basically coming from the Hyannis side.
It's a bottleneck right there. It's really a bottleneck right there.
Yeah, it is. And it's our bottleneck, and I'm used to it.
That's why they have Old Barnstable Road coming off of one way.
We tried to do that years ago.
That's what I always think.
We tried to do that years ago, come up to Anderson Lane and go by the police department and by the school. People got all upset, and you come out on Old Barnstable Road. But people got upset because they knew how many cows going by the school when the kids are out in the playground, which made sense, you know, at that time, you know, but.
Well, especially with the full head of steam coming.
Yeah.
If you're coming from Falmouth, you've got a full head of steam down Old Barnstable Road. But that can also be remedied by doing like a signal ahead sign before the school, you know? Just to warn people, hey, you're coming.
Well, there was a fence, there was a lot of room there. I mean, it was, and the playground was in the back of the school zone. But anyways, that died.
So what I'm going to say, Colton, is that, that there needs to be much more community input regarding the crosswalks.
Yep.
Because we know that with a shared-use path, you have to have some crosswalks, right? But that, the, there needs to be more discussion about the ways that are used to calm traffic for those areas, which are rapid flashing lights and the raised crosswalks. I think that, you know, if the whole community says yes, we'll get used to it, you know what I mean, that we will all be on board. But I think if they don't do some outreach and community planning ahead of time, it'll be a disaster, so.
Well, they are, I did have a telephone conversation with DOT prior to the last meeting. And they are planning on gearing up for design review, public meetings over this summer. So there will be opportunities for the community to provide input, but I think it's a.
Hold the meeting around your right forth, and then we'll be able to get a lot of feedback.
Colleen, you said that some of our, some of the.
Tuesday after Memorial Day.
So Colleen, you said that at some of our public meetings on this, there were 70 people?
Yeah, the Alternatives meeting in December, we did two time periods. We did like an 11 and a 5. So total between, we got about 70 people in person. I think we had coverage on the Public Access TV as well, and we did a press release. So we're happy, you know, you know, the study's over now, and now it's in Mass dot hands. But, you know, I would just say that Mass dot projects, they don't move fast. So this, there'll be plenty of opportunity, um, for feedback. And, and they'll, they have to do a very detailed, uh, analysis on how many lanes, where the crosswalks are. And that, that drawing you guys got in that letter is, that's pretty much just someone with a paint, in paint on my, on your computer, like drawing it.
Right.
Uh, a line. It's not, I would not call that precise in any way. So, um, they have, they have, it, they're, those crossings are likely not gonna be like within the rotary. They're gonna be set back similar maybe to ours a little bit more. So I think there's, um.
That's good news.
Yeah, I would, I, that's, that's just like a paintbrush drawing. I would say it does not really appear right now, but I think they're just showing the concept of, they'll be crossings.
So if they are gonna be set back like how you all showed them on your model, then the question is just to crosswalk or not to crosswalk more so than it is three options, which is to crosswalk or not to crosswalk, and then if to crosswalk, where to put them.
Would the cross, would the crosswalks all have like a pole by the beginning of the crosswork, crosswalks? So that a person riding a bike could press the button?
That's a, that's a good question.
I mean, I could see all four crosswalks stopping.
So my question is, the, the shared use, use paths, would they connect to the existing crosswalks on these roads already? On 28, there's a crosswalk. On Great Neck Road South is a crosswalk already farther away from the rotary. Um, 151 is a crosswalk farther away from the rotary. And even, so the only thing would be Great Neck Road North and 28 going towards Hyannis. I can't really think of a crosswalk that's within proximity to the rotary.
That's a good point, so I can, I, cause I can, you know, under that kinda, you know, the community needs to.
Isn't it one of Donna's Lane?
Give input about the crosswalks, you know, talking about using the existing crosswalks.
Yeah.
The job's just to roll Donna's Lane, there's a crosswalk.
The reason they may inject that is cost, that's the only thing. Cause depending on how far they're, they're out, like these are 10 feet wide. These shared use paths apparently are gonna be like sidewalks.
Yes.
So that's a lot of curbing cost. That's the only thing, like if they're far down.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we should still push for it because, you know, I like that idea a lot, Dale. And it also reminds me, Mary, of your point at the last meeting where you said, you know, dogs are smart enough not to cross at intersections, you know? Like they go up the street.
They go up the street. They never cross at the, at the lights, like we do. Um, Colleen, you don't have handy how many people made comments on this study, do you?
Um, um, I can find that. They're in, it's probably on the website, um, project website. We have meeting summaries and that summarize all the comments we've got, so I can, I can bring that up.
So are you guys good, as Colleen looks for that, you guys good with me drafting something up?
Yeah.
To them, okay. Cause I'd rather get it to them now than wait another two weeks.
Shouldn't the state be here too, talking about this?
We did invite them, they weren't able to.
Alright.
So, but that's gonna be in my letter, is to please come and give us an update. And maybe answer some of these questions to start with.
Looks like they're gonna be the one designing this.
Yeah, I guess I don't have a number, um, I just have.
That's okay, alright.
The summary of it, of what, what we, I'd have to manually count.
That's okay.
It's on the, on there. The most comments were on the rotary retrofit, um, that people liked to the best. But there's, there's a whole range of, and like I said, that project included other intersections, so there's lots of feedback.
Oh, okay. Rob, what were you saying?
I, I attended those, that's the library, the retrofit, uh, or the alternative, uh, conversations. And the retrofit went out hands down.
Hands down.
Because there was basically nothing but painted lines, no eminent domain takings. Uh, and the lines could be painted, well, very similar or as this. I didn't notice or concern myself with the rotary, I mean, the, the crosswalks. And based on our previous discussions, yes, those crosswalks are on top of the circle, basically, close to the circle. And I totally agree, they should be distant from the circle. But basically the line organization and the painting and the not taking of any additional lands. I thought that was a foregone conclusion and I, for you, for five or six years, I've been waiting for it to happen. Saying what's going on, but things, things, uh, take time, I guess. But I, if DOT's not gonna be doing anything, you know, shovels in the, in the dirt for 15 years or so or more, why not go along with the retrofit?
Right.
As an interim and move the crosswalks away.
I think that's what they're doing. They're doing a retrofit.
No, but they're not moving the crosswalks.
Well, they.
But they, they.
Probably would.
They're, they're, what they've shown us is bringing that shared path inside. And that's what I think we need to tell them, that that's not gonna work for us.
Picture we should work with right there.
That's what we want.
But in the interim, that picture's not all that bad if you remove the crosswalks.
Right.
Right, right.
And where would you put the crosswalks, like further down the road?
Down, yeah. And there, as Dale was saying, there are existing crosswalks.
Existing ones.
But they're probably more than 100 yards away.
Some, I think the 151 wasn't certain, definitely.
Yeah, they are.
28.
But if, yeah, but I think if, if you, if, if, if people, there's little signs saying crosswalk down here at a safe distance. You know?
Yeah, I'd much rather cross.
You know, cross further down, you know, there's little signs you can do.
Right.
Cause it, I would, I would never cross the Bourne Rotary, do you know what I mean? I would never cross the Middle Borough Rotary, never, in a million years.
Not more than one.
And I would never cross this, I, I, I've done this, I've gone into the middle of the Rotary when there was a police officer helping us across. You know, um.
And I hope the older people are proud.
Yeah.
Tim, did you, you're standing up. Did you wanna come to the mic?
Yeah.
Come to the mic.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Tim Dorsy, 86 Blue Castle Drive. Here's how I read it. Um, one of the reasons for the congestion, as the clip said, is people go kinda drive, right? Into the rotary. So now you're gonna draw all this graffiti in the rotary, lanes and such. People are gonna slow down because they're not familiar with all this nonsense, right? Which is gonna cause congestion up and down all the, coming into the rotaries, right? So then you have these crosswalks, which are gonna slow down even more. Why can't we raise the crosswalks so no one's walking on the road? They go up.
Up and over, it's extraordinarily expensive.
Okay, yeah, but we're talking about people's safety, right? So money is, you know.
It's like millions of dollars.
So then also, I happen to know, I've lived here for quite a while, uh, coming from New Seaberry down Great Neck Road South just before, um, the nursing home, whatever it is, uh, there's an ancient cotway that go, I used to drive it many times, often, that goes behind the picnic box and all that, right out onto 28. They should look into that to like alleviate traffic. All that traffic coming from New Seaberry every day goes into the, the rotary. It stops everything, right? If that ancient cotway was utilized, I mean, it would go, it would just bypass the rotary and go right up 28. That's, that's an option also that should be, uh, that's an avenue to pursue and look at.
So that's Great Neck Road South to Route 28?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Behind the, uh, picnic box and the, uh.
Kind of by the river.
And Smitty's.
It was down by Truck Pond.
Yeah, Truck Pond.
Yeah.
It was the old, it was called Old Barnstable Road or something.
Okay.
I used to drive down there and go fishing, but.
So the, you know, if people don't know how to drive, you're gonna draw all this graffiti. It's gonna slow things down, plus on top of that, we got these crosswalks that you're gonna throw in right before the rotary, which is gonna slow things down like crazy. It's, it's, it's a lot of, uh, it's a lot. And then like Brian, uh, the town planner said, we're gonna have to really have a long runway before you get into the rotary. Like with the double lanes and everything, way more than what they have, uh, drawn there. So that's my, uh, that's how I read it. So that's, that's my input.
You know, that, that we anticipate there'd be a lot of public comment about the number of lanes going in and out of each leg.
Anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I think the other landmarkings will definitely.
The conservation land down there?
Time to get used to it.
The conservation land down there?
Yeah. Get used to it.
The mastery.
I kind of had somewhat similar thoughts regarding painting within the circle.
That would not be inexpensive either.
Mike, what about that?
Certainly off season.
Come out again on 28. Now the traffic's tough, you know.
Something to think about. Alright, good. I'll, I'll send, I'll send him a letter, okay? Sound good?
Sound good.
Thank you so much, Colleen. That was just so unbelievably helpful.
Thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome, and we'll, I'm sure we'll see each other at some upcoming meetings. So, alrighty, good night.
Good night.
Bye.
It's sharpen that pencil up.
I know, really. That was very useful, thank you. Okay. So, let's see, so we've, we've gone through presentation about that. Um, I'll summarize our comments and send them in there. The big comment is, is that we want, we're looking forward to public sessions on all of this. Alright.
And maybe have the state too, try to get the state again.
Well, they're supposed to be coming down.
Alright.
Yeah. I'm just writing it down so I don't forget.
Yeah, they are, the state has been meeting with DPW.
Alright.
Fairly regularly. My understanding is over the last 10 years. Um, they, I did reach out to them, I did have that conversation with them. They did say they would get back to me. They did not get back to me before this meeting. They, that doesn't mean that, that it's a definite no yet. But in our initial conversation, they also did mention that their intentions are to have these design review public meetings over the summertime. So I think that'll be an opportunity both to acquire more information, because I 100% agree with Colleen's analysis that the sketch plan, which isn't even really a sketch plan, it's a GIS map with colored line drawings on it, uh, is a really rough estimate just to get the dialogue going. And obviously, they would have more detailed, uh, concept plans for these public meetings. And also invite questions as well as comments.
Why, why I was met to like 15 years? You gotta remember, there's other towns and cities asking for money on their roadways. And the state only can allow so many grants each year, and we already been getting money. So we may be bypassed for five or six years.
Yep.
Before they turn around. And this plan could be all changed five or six years from now, like, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I mean, the fact that DPW has been meeting with them for 10 years, that Cape Cod Commission's plan is from 2020 confirms what you were saying, Dennis. I mean, these projects are, um, they're, they're a long play, a long game, you know, so.
Alright.
There's a lot going on, we have to, sooner we get to it, before we can.
Yes.
You know, it's like a big house.
Nobody, nobody's gonna go to bed and then wake up and the next day, everything's painted and.
Yes.
Like, what just happened?
Alright, moving on. No public hearings. Um, our board engineer is not available tonight. Was there anything he emailed to us?
No, so Ed did not, um, email a report. Um, my understanding is he has been traveling and is still presently traveling. Uh, he was, uh, originally scheduled to be here tonight, although this week I found out that there was a conflict in his travel plans. But he did not, uh, send out a report, so.
Okay. Old business, Aquay Highlands Tripartite Agreement, request for release. Um, the person who requested the release is not available.
Right, so same, same thing, uh, as last meeting. He really wants Ed at this meeting, um, and since Ed wasn't able to make it, he's asked to continue to Ed's next available date, which is looking like, I believe it's May 21? Six? It's May 22nd, so.
Okay. No public comment on that? We're good?
Yeah, we're good, yeah.
Yeah, whatever it is, it is.
Um, housing production plan update. Am I gonna do that?
You're up.
Let's see, so I think it was last week, right?
Yes.
It was last week. So it was last week, um, uh, Brian, Karen, and I met with Barrett Planning, Alexis, and Zalata. And, uh, two members of the Affordable Housing Committee, Mike Sparks.
And Paula Peters.
And Paula Peters. And, um, Brian was there and the new administrative assistant for, uh, planning, Hannah was there, which was great. So, um, we went over, you know, the main concept, that we want this to be a clean water plan. We want this to be an affordable housing plan and a clean water plan. And I think that was embraced by all. Um, I submitted the comments that we approved here on the, the planning board. And so now Barrett Planning is incorporating those changes. Um, I think it's then gonna go to the Affordable Housing Committee? Is that what we decided?
There was talk of, uh, additional comments from the Affordable Housing Committee.
Or a workshop with us and the Housing Committee?
Alright.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd be better.
Alright, so that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll do a workshop with them and, and Barrett Planning can make the presentation.
What about Paula Peters' idea about little houses?
Yep, that's in there.
Tiny homes, yeah.
Tiny, but years ago, they used to have for the small people, villagers. There's one in Barnstable off of them.
Okay.
And you go there and they're, they're cute, it could be, but they are all small little houses. You know, the doors were even like five feet high, but they had, they had about six of them. I think the last one was out west than that. And they call that, the one in Barnstable, there was probably 75 homes on like four or five acres, you know?
Huh.
So, I don't know if it's still there, was there?
Yeah, so tiny homes, is it still there?
It's still there.
Recording secretary is noting, yes. So tiny homes, it means different things to different people, right? Um, so it is something we're gonna have to work on defining. Um, in some cases, these are like living pods that are on wheels.
Yeah, I didn't like that, though.
So we have to think about that carefully. I know our building commissioner is kinda concerned about minimum sizes of living spaces.
Yeah.
So we'll have to do a lot of work on that one, but.
That's a good idea.
I do get that it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, that, um.
Don't we already have?
I did some, looking into this.
Okay, Karen.
My wife, I put her in the, down the basement of the, I said, tiny homes.
Peters is talking about Operation Tiny Home.
Bang the pipe if she wants something.
They've got a good plan for tribal members.
She can hear me.
Now, the question would be, um, how solid are these? The only thing that I saw that were good, having lived in Florida, were shipping containers with hurricane straps on a foundation.
Yeah.
Cause these, as somebody commented, they're nothing more than sheds. They're, they're very unsafe. They depreciate tremendously. It's not like we have a house. It's pretty hard to get a mortgage sometimes. Uh, trailering is out, in my opinion.
They do.
Because it's, it's really not safe. The zoning has to be worked out.
Yes.
Uh, it's not good for families, better for a couple, one person.
Right.
You know, kids in that space, they start getting, you know, crazy. Uh, they tell you that the smells just drive you crazy if you're cooking fish. It's completely enveloping the space unless you keep all the doors open, the window open. Um, minimum size, would that be like for the ADU, like 400 square feet?
That's all type, that's all the kind of questions we're gonna have to answer, you know?
Um, it can't be in the floodplain, has to be upland.
So I was thinking more of those clever tiny homes, not the cargo containers.
I think we had to define what a tiny home is, right?
Right, but it's kind of like, um, they have, they have the loft, the you sleep in the loft.
Like a prefab home.
And then the stairs has all storage inside. And like even the refrigerator is, is under the stairs and that's the kitchen. You know, they're, they're small spaces with.
There's a TV show with tiny homes. There's a TV show with tiny homes.
Yeah. They have very clever designs.
If there's a safe one, that would be the best thing to build, if they can be built safe.
Yeah.
And I think Paula is actually talking about not so much zoning it, but zoning it and actually being part of the construction process.
Yeah.
Like having a say in the, the quality of life and the standards of the build. I think she's thinking of doing it on town-owned land and having.
And it's like a pilot program.
It's pilot program.
Yeah.
She wanted to do it as a pilot program.
Yeah. And I think something like that is very feasible if we do have an assurance of quality.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I would never put somebody in a cargo container. I know there's like, all these things online that show clever cargo container design, and I, I.
I'm just looking at it for tornadic forces or hurricane.
Hurricane.
You know, having lived in Florida, that's what I think about.
Well, the, so the new building code defines tiny homes as a resident, my understanding is, as a residential structure of 400 square feet or less. So tiny homes themselves can run the gamut in terms of quality, both when it comes to construction quality and durability, as well as the quality of materials and aesthetic qualities, right? So, and, and they take on all these different forms that you're talking about. Like, there are tiny homes on wheels that are basically trailers, and you can hook them up to your truck and, and take them up to, you know, Bar Harbor, park it on an empty lot and hang out for a little while, right? There are the container model homes, as you mentioned. There are actual structures with a foundation. Typically, they don't dig into the foundation and.
It's a slab.
Basement. Yeah, it's usually slab concrete, exactly. And then there are, actually, there's been a whole lot of, I guess scuttlebutt is the best term, or rumors or talk about Tesla coming out with tiny homes that are like self-contained and efficient. Now, I don't know if this is just pre, pre-marketing for an actual product that's gonna come out, or.
I'm seeing them more and more online.
Yeah.
That they're like, they're like compact living, not, not necessarily one manufacturer or another.
Yeah. But they're solar powered, they have composting toilets, so you don't even have to hook them up to.
I think that would have to be the premier thing, first thing you look at. And the safety becomes expensive.
Another option we should consider. I mean, we have to consider all the options, right?
Right.
Where does the waste go?
Tight tanks.
So it would depend, right? So some, some would hook up.
Some self-contained.
Septics, some would hook up to sewer, and some have composting toilets. Some of these tiny homes are built by companies where you literally just take them off-grid. You take them out to a lot that's not even accessible by a paved road. They'll have, they'll have them airlifted by a helicopter and they'll drop, they'll just drop them right in the middle of the lot. And they're built to be self-sustaining. And they even like customize the materials used to make them depending on what kind of lot, like if you're dropping them in the woods, or if you're dropping them on the beach and they're, they're gonna have to deal with salt erosion. So there's, you know, it's, it's, it is a big movement. And there's a lot of alternatives out there. Not all of them are gonna be right from Ashby. The question is, are any of them right from Ashby? And if so, which ones?
Right.
Cost.
It's just another, taking out the box, looking another way to get more houses down there.
We'll build one and you can try it for a while.
The, the other movement that's happening is like the whole van life movement. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of this.
Van?
Yeah, van life. People are like, framing the inside of vans. I mean, some of these vans look like luxury lots. Yachts, rather, on the inside of them.
Especially when the kids are all out. It's like, I don't go that way.
Look at where you live in your own.
Build more parking lots.
Use two, three of them.
That's it, yo. And they have to pay taxes on four bedroom.
Yeah, but do you wanna wind up, say it's a young person, he lives in that place for 10 years, and his bedroom is only six, five feet high, and then, you know, at 50, he winds up with it on his back.
You have to make the sale in 7/6. That's code, no matter if it's a tiny house or not.
They don't. They don't. Those upstairs, you have to just crawl.
Going upstairs, but it, the living area.
Oh, yeah, down there, yeah.
The bedroom, you can.
Well, the bedroom, you're laying down.
You gotta crawl into the bed.
I've never had a problem.
Just don't forget in the middle of the night and like try and stand up.
I was minded at stuff when we were kids, you know, like, come on.
I've never had a problem banging my head.
Well, yeah. My, my grandpa had a cabin out in the woods when we were kids, and it had lofts, and that was like our favorite thing. The loft was right above the kitchen.
Yeah.
And grandma would start making bacon and eggs in the morning, and that's what would wake us up, the smell coming out.
Yeah.
So. But, you know, that was seasonal.
We voted a new champion.
Good. Alright, I'm done. Take over. Are we done with HPP?
Yep.
Raise and replace.
Oh, really? They done brought that in?
So, raise and replace, raise and replace. I, I was charged by Madam Chair at the last meeting to come up with a general working plan, which I thought was a great idea because it's good to kind of at least have some rough deadlines to make sure you keep things in mind and stay on top of things. My thoughts are by mid-September to have a solid working first draft. Again, as we put it on the agenda moving forward, I would like to call it pre-existing non-conforming uses, and then put parenthetically raise and replace, so people who are used to raise and replace know what we're talking about. But we're talking about more than raise and replace per, per our last meeting. So I'd like to have a rough draft by mid-September with the understanding that it's gonna be tweaked a lot between then and January, and then ideally have a final draft for January for the Springtown meeting.
Good idea.
One strategy that I think would be helpful with that, in order to ensure that we're obtaining diverse perspectives and hearing the people while we come up with even a rough draft, is to have somewhat of a subcommittee that could either meet bi-weekly or monthly. And I guess I would ask the board now, between now and the next meeting, to think of some names. I've already contacted some board members and gotten some, some names of some folks that would be probably good matches. But I'd love to have the board members share them at the next meeting if they're so willing. And, or email me those names between now and the next meeting, and preferably with their contact information, so I can get a sense from them if they're amenable to participating. But obviously, Bob Orsi, who's been very vocal for the Pompanasset Group, is a name that was circulated, as well as some others. So I'd love board input there.
So I put forward Glenn McCarthy, because he was actually the, the resident that came five years ago to bring it to the planning department. It was Glenn McCarthy. So we need to include him. I think that you probably want at least one member of the planning board?
Yes, and.
So think about who's interested.
I mean.
I'll do it for as long as I can, and even after.
I think Mike would be.
I'd like to be involved.
A plopping ass with it, yo.
Okay.
But what happens if you?
But you know what? He can be at large, whatever.
Oh, they could.
Right. At large.
Okay. So Michael Richardson, do you like, would you like to work on that too?
It's my baby.
Okay. So I'm, I'm good. I'm good with Michael and Karen. Are you guys good?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so there you go. You have two volunteers.
Great. And then.
And then, and then we voluntold Bob Orsi and Glenn McCarthy. But you know, you need, you need at least five.
Sure.
Right? And I'm sure there might be a few more. So.
And one data point that I'd like to share with the members of the board, as well as the public, that relates to this is a brief update on Regulation 25, which is the Concom regulation that kind of inter.
Can we go back to this before you go to Reg 25?
Oh, sure. Well, I was kind of sneaking this in under raise and replace, since I know that it, it's involved in the discussion. But whenever you're ready, I'm happy to transition.
Yeah. So I think that we should have some type of community meeting in the summer.
Okay.
I think June is better than July and August, don't you think?
Probably.
Yeah. So after Memorial Day, but before 4th of July.
Yeah.
People are down. Do you think Mondays and Fridays are the best, or?
Monday, they're both bad days, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. Then what do you think is the best?
I think middle of the week sometimes. If, if the people who are on Cape, Friday they're coming into town.
And Monday they're leaving.
Monday, they're, they're probably up working, so. But, I, 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 really in June, I guess it really isn't a bad day. I wouldn't do it on Friday. I'd do it on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, something like that.
Okay. Let, let's, well, okay. So I'm thinking that people would be down for the weekend, and they might stay an extra day.
Yeah, if they know ahead of time, you know, they might stay on Monday, sure.
Because, because there's a lot of seasonal people that are interested in this. Yeah, something.
You may end up having two meetings anyways, depending on what you get for attendance.
Yeah. So I'd, I'd try to do something at the library, you know, like, you know how we set up the table in a big rectangle?
Yeah.
Remember, we did that, and we just went through it again. We'll just go through it again. It was interesting because we had that workshop, I don't know if everybody knows this, but we had that workshop, and then afterwards, I got a lot of written materials from people that were at the workshop. And I'm like, why didn't you give it to us during the workshop? You know what I mean? So we do have some materials that we can share at that workshop.
Yeah, it was a good meeting, I thought.
I thought it was a really good meeting. So, yeah. And then, and then you seeing that Regulation 25?
Yeah, so draft, yeah. The update there is, I just had a conversation with, this time, Dan in Conservation Commission. And Draft 8 of Regulation 25 is going to be on the agenda for the Conservation Commission on this next Thursday, April 24. They are thinking that they're probably going to be opening up for public comment either on May 8 or May 22. They believe it will be a very short public comment window period, since it's something that they've been working on for a long time, and that they've announced that this public comment window will be short. It's likely gonna be only one to two days long, and they expect prompt adoption after that public comment period. So.
They can't have a public comment period of only two days?
I'm, I'm not in Conservation Commission, so I'm not.
Well, we don't have to go to town meeting for this. They can, they can rule on this.
Right. It's a home rule petition.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Well, maybe I guess, I guess, I mean, I mean, our public hearing on zoning is.
That's very different, obviously.
Is an hour. So I guess, I guess I shouldn't criticize. Okay.
Yeah. Different statutes.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, that's right.
For adopting local rules.
And we, we should be familiar with the FEMA rules, too.
Of course.
For the raise and replace?
Mm-hmm.
Did we want to have a guest speaker?
Who would that be?
I don't know.
What kind of speaker would be for it against it, you know, raise and replace?
No, what, what, what are flood plains? You know what I mean? What regulations are there? What triggers a, 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 something going up on pilings?
Yeah.
Do you want me to try to find somebody?
Yeah, I wonder if you could get somebody from FEMA.
You never know. I know there's somebody at the county that does flood plains.
Yeah, yeah. There was one name. I don't know the name.
Remember, they went through our bylaw, and they, they were too busy to come?
Yes.
But maybe they're not so busy now. Maybe we, maybe we can have the building commissioner too. Because he deals with that all the time.
Building commissioners in general on Cape Cod deal with it quite often.
Yeah. Because they're the one that has to break the bad news. And let me work on that. Maybe we can have a guest speaker. I thought that Colleen was great.
Yeah.
Colleen Maderos, I think that was so great.
She did a fantastic job.
That was amazing. Okay, I'll work on that. Because you're, you're saying we need to understand that before we do.
We need to understand the whole thing. We need to understand Chapter 48.
Okay.
Regulation 25.
Alright.
Yeah.
And FEMA rules. There might be something else. I don't know what else.
Okay, got it. You've said that before. I'm writing it down so I don't forget. Alright, good. Osprey Court covenant release.
Yeah, we're gonna table that. We did reach out to the applicant's attorney. Haven't yet heard back since the last meeting. So we're assuming that there's no update or progress, I think. I'll probably just pull it from the agenda until we hear that there is an update.
Okay. We did the new business under Chair's report. I, I, I just want to let you guys know that I reviewed the, the agenda with Brian.
Right.
Before, after we set the agenda, I go through that. So just heads up. And that's working out good. And also, the other thing I did was I emailed Rodney Collins regarding that new acquisition at Ford 75, Nathan Ellis. The Community Preservation Committee, you know, really fought hard to get, to get the town to buy that land. And we have, the Community Preservation Program has administrative money, right?
Yeah.
So we, we've took a vote to offer that to the Town Manager's Office and the Board of Selectmen as a pot of money to help staff figure out what's the best plan to improve that property, provide public access to the property, clean up anything on the property. There's some, there's a building there. Restore that river. The, the, is it the Childs River?
Yep, Childs River.
You know, there's like a river, there's a river, dry riverbed in there that needs to be restored. And so I did, I've been playing telephone tag with Rodney, and I just sent him an email this morning. So just heads up.
One point about, about properties. You know, Zachary's is for sale now.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So that's right on the line. That's on the sewer service area, and it fits.
You should buy it, the town. There's six acres in the back.
Yep.
Talk about tiny homes.
Yeah.
3.3 million?
They, they could put some good housing in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'd be town owned.
It's right on the line.
Sewer line.
You should have bought it when he was selling it. Richard, Richard was first selling, you know, it was like $2,000, $2 million or $3 million. And now it's probably $6,000, $7 million.
I think it's, I could, I feel like it was 3.3.
It might have been that, whatever.
It was so expensive.
Right now, like, right now, it's that price.
Okay.
You asking now is 3.3 million?
I think so. It's either, I believe so. Or I could be completely wrong.
Next.
Alright, if I, if I reached, Rodney's so busy, but if I reach him on the phone, I'll share his, your comments with him. Okay, Town Planner Report.
So first item would be the publication of public notices, just to give everybody a heads up that the public notices went out for our public hearing that will happen on April 30 regarding our proposed ADU bylaw. If you all recall, it's something that we've been discussing quite a bit. It consisted of red lines and revisions that came primarily from Town Council's office, as well as this board's. It's the ADU, Proposed ADU Bylaw. It's Article 24, Warren Article 24. And it's to bring our accessory apartment bylaw provision in line with the new terms of the Affordable Homes Act, which was recently adopted, and regulates accessory dwelling units. Also, for 647 Falmouth Road, you should expect a very brief public hearing on April 30. The public notices went out for it. This is a specialty grocery store. It is over 10,000 square feet for the proposed structure. So that triggers mandatory DRI review by the Cape Cod Commission. So we'll likely just be opening up the public hearing, briefly hearing from the applicant, and then referring it formally to the Cape Cod Commission.
So was this the address that was before us, like, I don't know, a year ago?
Yeah.
It's where Trader Joe's was gonna go.
Yeah.
It's the third time before, it's the third time it's been before this board.
Okay. Alright. And just to jump in, I think I forwarded an email to you today from the Friends of the Mashpee Wildlife Refuge. So, what's his name? Glenn?
Glenn Davis.
Glenn Davis. I saw him at the Honor of the Earth event.
Yeah.
And he said, oh, you know, it's the Warren Article for a proposed visitor center under 28.
Yeah, right.
So I said, why don't you come in to the planning board to talk to us about it? I did first propose 6:30, but I think I'm gonna have to bump it to 7:30, because I double booked. But it, they, I heard their presentation to the Board of Selectmen months ago.
Yeah.
But I think it'd be good to have them come in and. But I think it'd be good to have them come in and show us that. I think that it's important.
It's about time.
Yes.
They have it, they're sitting here.
Is it a kiosk type thing or a real building?
A real building, the way they talked about a real building. And they're going to have people go there, there's classes and there's a lot of activities to go on, you know.
And it's a town meeting vote. It has to pass town meeting, so I thought. So I'll email him back 7:30 on that night. Does that sound good?
Okay, so you want to do it on 4:30 as well?
Yeah, because we won't have time because town meeting is May 5th.
Yep. So what we're probably going to have to do since the publication notice first went out for the ADU bylaw with a 7:10 time.
Yeah.
Is just pause that, then open up the 647 Falmouth Road, do a quick vote to send them to the Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah.
Then open up-
Yeah.
No time.
This warrant article.
Well, it's, yeah, we don't have to have a set time.
No, it's extended, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're not doing, we're not doing public, we're not noticing that. He's just coming. It's part of the public meeting.
They're just coming to talk to us about it and try to get our support for town meeting.
My thoughts are just if we tell them 7:30 and then we talk about the ADU bylaw for an hour and a half.
Well, right, but there might not be anybody here for the ADU bylaw. They might be done in three minutes.
Fair point.
And then, right, and then sometimes it's one comment and we do struggle with it, but I see what you're saying, but we could pause it.
Oh, I defer to, you're the chair. You set the agenda. I defer to your judgment.
All right. All right. So, oh.
Just a couple of other quick items regarding the Cape Cod Commission, the RPP. As this board is aware, that they had public update meetings in March and I just wanted to quickly brief the board on the upcoming schedule, which is that they'll be having subregional meetings in early May. And they then plan to have the first draft completed in either late spring, early summer. And then they intend to have a 60-day public comment period over the summer. And then that will, that will overlap with subregional hearings.
Oh, okay.
So again, that's on the RPP.
With subregional public hearings.
And then I'm not sure if you want me to mention it, but in the most recent Cape Cod Commission meeting, they also talked about this project in Provincetown, which I mentioned.
Oh, yes. So this is kind of interesting. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's number 44 Captain Birdie's Way. It's a 36-unit build with nine units per floor, so it's going to be four floors. It's a pretty substantial affordable housing project and it will have parking in the basement. 28% of the units are going to be affordable, which translates to 10 units. So, yeah, thought it was pretty, pretty interesting. Seems pretty unique for, for P-Town as well, so.
And there's some height to that, right?
It was four stories.
This is the wave of the future. You'll get Cambridge that I pointed out last time, now four stories here.
Four stories, underground parking though.
Yes, underground parking.
So this is going to be a big deal, underground parking.
And that, that location in Birdie's Way is very commercial, although it is right by this, right by the V School, which is the only school in Provincetown.
All right.
And there was also an update on the bridges. Sagamore Bridge Phase 1 funding is secured. Bourne funding is not yet secured. It's interesting that total cost of the two bridge replacement projects, 4.5 billion.
Yeah.
And my understanding too is that the first design build notice is to be issued in the winter of 27, 28.
I bet you that bridge cost would be double by the time they finish it.
Yeah.
Just like the Big Dig, you remember? There's going to be so much money, went up to 27.
Well, that's what towns see with their sewer projects too, you know. I mean, they, they run the cost estimates in the beginning and then as they're phasing them out, they're just going up and up and up.
Okay, Chapter 91 licenses.
Oh, that's just a brief announcement and I won't call out the specific address that's on the agenda. But please be very careful when you fill out your paperwork for your Chapter 91 licenses for docs. In one particular instance, we had someone where the planning board representative, which is me for those, is supposed to sign off, they typed in our clerk's name. So instead of my signature, it was the clerk's name that was typed in and then it was dated. So that can just kind of cause problems in the approval process and potentially put your license even post issuance in jeopardy. So that's all. Just a brief announcement.
Anything other miscellaneous items?
Not for me.
Okay. Board Member Committee reports. Cape Cod Commission, no further report. Charter Review Committee, no further report. Community Preservation, oh, yeah, Charter Review Committee, no further, Community Preservation Committee, just that note about support for improving 475 Nathan Ellis Road and no other, no other report. Design Review.
Yeah.
I wasn't there, but I had a personal situation, but I prepared for it and I'm up to date on it. It's, it might go to, it might come here. And the reason it might come here to the planning board is.
What is it?
It abuts, I'll tell you, it abuts-
868 Falmouth Road.
868 Falmouth Road.
Large ground-mounted solar project.
Storage is.
Okay.
And it would be behind and they want to build, this is Falmouth Road, these are the stope buildings. And they want to build five carport solar arrays right back there. And I did look at the land and it's a big piece of land. I think it's like five acres. I'm not sure.
So it's partially developed already?
It, it already exists as a storage.
Oh, okay.
Store boats and other things back there.
All right.
It's being built by NextGrid. And it's a big deal. And they have to figure out a stormwater program though.
So it's a carport?
Carport.
Over their existing parking lot or?
This is just all gravel. It's nothing special back there, just dirt.
It's a bylaw on Mashpee, I thought.
Five arrays.
Pardon?
I thought there was a bylaw on Mashpee that there was no carports allowed on Mashpee.
I think that we relaxed that.
Oh, you did relax that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, NextGrid is the applicant.
Okay.
Have you done a zoning analysis on this, Brian?
Yes, this was, this also was covered at the Plan Review Committee meeting, so I'll wait to comment until then.
All right, Plan Review. Are you down with Design Review?
Pardon me?
I wasn't sure if, yeah.
You weren't there?
No, I was at both.
Oh, you were, is it, we're at Design Review, Design Review too?
Yeah, they asked me to attend Design Review just for good measure, but I was at Plan Review because it's under my permit.
They had a qualm, so.
Is that, is that your report for Design Review?
Yeah.
Okay, Plan Review.
So same project, 868 Falmouth Road. The bylaw that they're coming under is actually the large-scale ground-mounted solar bylaw. It's not a parking lot back there. It's under a ZBA special permit. The ZBA special permit was initially granted for mini warehouse storage as well as boat and RV storage. It was then later amended to also provide U-Haul truck rentals. My understanding is both businesses are still currently operational. They will be in front of the planning board no matter what for two reasons. The first of two is they will be coming before us for an A and R. The reason for the A and R is that this is actually already two lots. It's slightly over nine acres. One of the two lots they intend to reduce to be slightly under two acres. That way they can expand the lot that they're putting the ground-mounted solar system on so that it doesn't overlap with this smaller lot. So they'll be in front of us for an A and R. The second reason they'll be in front of us is they are actually seeking waivers to some of the dimensional requirements for ground-mounted solar that only the planning board can waive. The two waivers that they're seeking in particular are the 100-foot distance to residential lots. So this is in I-1. It's in an industrial zone. But the particular lot, it borders Res 3. So all of its abutting neighbors are residential lots, many of which are developed with structures. The, so they're looking to reduce that 100-foot setback to approximately 60 feet. So it's about a 40% reduction. The second waiver that they intend to seek is regarding the height of the ground-mounted solar devices themselves. Our bylaw provides for a 15-foot height maximum and their, their proposed height is, I think, 22.2 feet. It's approximately seven feet higher. So it would be a 14.8, I believe, foot underpass underneath where the panels are. But because these are rotating panels that effectively rotate with the sunlight, there's additional height over them. So it, given the history of this bylaw, it, it has begged the question of how do we actually get them in front of the planning board for the waivers? And the reason why is I-1 was the first zone in Mashpee to allow ground-mounted solar projects and it allowed them with just Plan Review Committee. So in 2023, when this bylaw was, and it was just listed in the use table and that's it. It didn't have its own specific bylaw provision. So in 2023, when this bylaw was considerably beefed up to allow for ground-mounted solar projects to also occur in both C-2 and C-3, that being Commercial 2 and Commercial 3 zoning districts. And also to set some really well-thought-out provisions for, because I mean, the solar, from the time, you know, I think the I-1 provision or the provision that allowed I-1 with just Plan Review Committee, review and approval, I think that was adopted in 2009. Whereas fast forward to 23, like solar exploded in those 14 years and our knowledge and our understanding of solar really advanced. So the current bylaw has these dimensional requirements. It also has very important common industry practices like a decommissioning plan, like ensuring a glare study, like all these other things that we've learned from experience of over a decade of putting in larger-scale solar projects.
Thanks, Brian. We wrote that. Thanks. That's a real compliment. The board worked hard on that.
Good, good. Well, it's definitely, it's definitely well-thought out. The one caveat though is that in I-1, and it still only requires Plan Review Committee, but the planning board are the only folks that can do a waiver. So we're just, we're just noodling over and we did submit some questions and alternatives to Town Council's office. We've also since thought of a solid alternative for how best to get them in front of the board to get the waivers. One of it, one alternative that we're exploring, that we're probably likely going to move forward with is have them go to the ZBA to modify their special permit. Since this particular property, it's not a long-term solution, but for this particular project and this particular property, they are, they're already under a special permit. So have them go to the ZBA for a modification of a special permit that will have the added value of giving abutter residences notices as well as a formal public hearing. And with that process, dual notice, a public meeting with the planning board, where the planning board can vote to grant the waivers and send a referral letter of recommending or not recommending these waivers or recommending with conditions these waivers to the ZBA. And then they can be written in to the modified special permit as additional conditions.
I think we need a flow chart for that one.
Yeah. You know, if you can see, if you, if they're granted the waiver for 22 feet, can you see those from the road? I was trying to figure out if you could see any of that.
So that, one of the deliverables that I asked the applicant in the Plan Review Committee to provide to us was tree height for the tree buffer that is there. But I was, I'm glad that you asked about the road. I can follow up on the roadside, but I was more concerned about the residential structures.
Yeah.
So I asked for something documenting average tree height as well as the thickness of the tree buffer there because most of the tree buffer is not on the subject property lot. Most of the tree buffer is on the abutting, abutting residential neighborhood lot. So to some extent, the lack of tree buffer on the subject property lot limits, indirectly limits the abutting residential neighbors because it kind of requires them, which is a good thing, especially for supporters of the tree preservation by law, but it requires them to keep those trees up if they want to have the visual buffer. Whereas built into the, this code, there's got to be some sort of a visual buffer, be it a fence or be it a tree buffer. So it's almost as if the applicant is having the neighbors comply with that provision of the code for them, if that makes sense. Is that clear?
No, say that again.
Just say no, Karen.
It sounds doesn't have a lot of trees.
I'm a big person. I can, I can.
Those are the trees, the, on the, on the, but I didn't really see them.
Most of the, yeah, most of the trees aren't on the lot where the project is proposed. When I say subject property lot, that's the applicant's lot, the lot where the, so most of the trees are on the residential neighbors' lot.
So isn't there, I haven't read that bylaw in a while. Isn't there a study that can be done with respect to glare?
Yep, so that was one of the other deliverables I asked of the applicant is to provide a glare study. So when they come for a special permit in C-2 and C-3, they're required to do so. But since this is I-1, technically they're not required. At the Plan Review Committee though, I asked them for it and they said they'd provide one, so.
Is there any other deliverables from the?
I also asked for a decommissioning plan.
A decommissioning plan?
Oh, good.
Oh, good. And I think they have to give, they have to put up some money.
Yeah.
Yep.
Security.
And I think they have to put up a decommissioning security. And, you know, if, if you think, if you think this is a problem and we should have this type of review for anything in the industrial zone, whether they need waivers or not, you know, we can modify the bylaw.
Yeah, I think for the, I think for the fall town meeting, it may be wise to just bring I-1 into the same criteria as C-2 and C-3.
Yeah.
And just do a special permit for all of them.
It's easier.
Yeah.
Because you have an example.
Yeah.
You know, you have an example how that would have really-
Yeah, and in the case like this, you know, when an applicant wants a waiver, they have to go to the planning board. So how do you do that if you're not coming to the planning board for a special permit?
Right.
We just need to, you know, it's, it's, that, that is a result of the legacy of the fact that it was allowed in I-1 only previously.
Right. Yep. Wow, that was quite an update. That's awesome. Okay, anything else? Plan Review.
Nope, that was the only project we looked at.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
No meeting.
Historic District Commission.
No meeting.
There's correspondence notices for the town of Falmouth and Sandwich. I don't anticipate any other topics. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So be.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, thank you very much.